Good evening, this is the April meeting of the Gardner Planning Board. First order of business is approval of minutes from our last meeting on March 8th.
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
On second. Motion made on second and to remove the... Approve the minutes from March 8th. Any discussion? By voice vote then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. New business, Zera West Broadway project, informal meeting and discussion.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested an informal meeting with the planning board to discuss a proposed project at Zera West Broadway in Gardner. Consists of multifamily development in the commercial two zoning. They're interested in partnering it through the smart growth planning developments. And I think there's two representatives for the applicant here tonight. They'll benefit to present the plan and discuss the project.
All right, please. Your name and address for the record?
Attorney Christine Trudy, 515 Main Street in Pittsburgh. My address situated here, here.
Where are you comfortable?
Okay. So first of all, Mr. Chair, board members, it's a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for allowing to have this informal meeting tonight. Just a little history on this project. We had been before these zoning board appeals requesting a use variance for this project. The use variance was denied, two in favor, one against. So we are here looking at the smart growth provisions as an alternative means of accomplishing the project. The subject parcel started out as a approximately 4.6 acre, 4.431 acre parcel. The parcel originally consisted of this piece right here. And as you can see, it crosses over the district boundary in Gardner. So this is C2, this is R2. It also crosses over the municipal boundary. So this is Templeton. So it is at the very end of West Broadway, abutting and crossing over the Templeton line. There are certainly challenges in that fact for this project. But other than where it lies and those different zonings, that's not what I'm here to try to resolve today. After the use variance was denied for the project, which again is 26 townhouse style units, residential units, of which 16 were to lie in Gardner through building one, building two, building three, building four. And then eight were to lie on the Templeton portion but be serviced by driveways lying After that, looking for another reservation for the project, we did want to examine whether smart growth provisions would be permissible. There were several challenges as we look at this parcel that we think can't be changed. So it's issues about where the parcel is, what it is, and where it lies. And that's the reason for the informal meeting. If these are challenges because we cannot change them, that make this an inappropriate project for smart growth. We would love to have an indication of that from the board, although I know you can't have a specific vote on it. And of course welcome any other comments on what you would like to see on the plan. So smart growth district provisions have a purpose statement to them. And the purpose statement says that the reason that these regulations exist is to promote compact mixed-use development. It says that the development should be convenient to a variety of transportation options. And it says that the project should promote the creation of new housing units that are contained in a variety of building types and laid out in a manner to promote the establishment of a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood. So as far as a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood, this parcel at this end of West Broadway is of course not serviced by sidewalks. And it is surrounded by other residential dwellings and then there is PAC located right over here. So one of the things that...
You said PAC?
PAC, so Polish American.
Okay.
So as far as looking for a pedestrian destination to go to, in the vicinity, PAC would be it pretty much within about a quarter mile. So not being able to change the fact of its location and that there's no sidewalks, we did want to know whether that would be too much of a burden to overcome. We are not serviced by a variety of transportation means. In other words, there's no bus service out here. Of course, the airport is down here, but I don't think that is walkable. And I don't know if that would be considered a transportation option, but it's definitely not serviced by a bus line. That's not something that we're going to be able to change. And then mixed-use development. This of course, because of the different zoning, is quite a challenge to figure out what to do with the parcel. And just so you know, we started out owning this parcel right before the ZBA decision. The applicant purchased an additional 1.6-piece parcel and then 11 acres right here, both from Mr. Manka. So the parcel is larger than we started out with. But it does still, you know, have those challenges as to how do you combine the uses. We looked at the fact of what the neighborhood is. As you know, on Templeton, there is a big single-family development going on across the road. There was a use variance allowing a single-family development over here. And the uses surrounding it, again with the exception of PAC a bit over here and the airport down there are residential. Mixed use was not something that we contemplated in this plan because the character of the neighborhood seemed opposed to it. Despite the fact that this district is C2, it seems to be pretty much a residential district. And adding a commercial, you know, as a mixed commercial unit in to have a mixed use seemed like it would not be in character with the neighborhood. So I realize I've stood here and, not to argue against the potential application, but there are a number of challenges presented by it, things that we can't change. One of the other routes contemplated by the applicant is seeking a zoning map change from C2 to C1 for basically this whole district. It's something I've talked briefly to Mr. Boergaard about and certainly needs more development. But after going through the ZBA process, we would like to make sure we put our time and efforts into something that is productive for both the city and the applicant. As I've said in the letter, we're just asking for permission for this development right now. But the applicant does contemplate developing the rest of the parcel in the future. That would look like approximately 60 units. It's approximately a $15 million project. So we do think that would provide a substantial benefit both ways to city and applicant, but again, I'm thinking the most productive way there. That's generally the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and welcome any feedback that you have.
Another requirement is to have water and sewer facilities.
Yes.
Are there any water mains in that area?
Yes. While we were going through the ZBA project, we checked with VPW, water and sewer is available at the street. It would have to be brought in, obviously, which adds to the project costs.
Would such a...I have to ask the engineer, would such a project affect the capacity of the drainage systems?
No, it shouldn't.
Okay.
There's obviously something you're gonna have to look at in detail, especially with how many units build out at the end in different phases? What would be the total?
At the...this stage, 26, at the end 60.
Yeah.
Sixty total? Sixteen, did you say?
Yes, so that's why it's a $15 million project.
If the application were to move forward, obviously the city would want to see use numbers and flows, potential from the project at its full build-out so that they can look at it. But for the most part, it's probably not a problem.
Anything else from board members?
I don't know. First of all...
You got mail.
Under the smart growth plan itself, it seems like we're missing more of what is required and what is there as far as heading. My look at it is for convenient transportation, which isn't there. Creation of new housing units, a variety of building types, there isn't. It seems like it's all pretty much cookie cutter in there. Establish pedestrian-oriented neighborhoods, I don't know. My feeling is we haven't hit any of those highlights underneath the growth plans.
Yeah, if you were to pursue this under smart growth, you'd have to get very creative with your plans. Like outside the box to try to hit those, because right now, I don't see it either.
Okay.
Anything else from board members? Staff?
About paths, your comment about to the airport, I wouldn't use that at all because it's...there were obviously no airlines there and it's really for private owners of airport. And being a former pilot, you front upon people walking on the runway. So I would try to stay away from the airport or use that as a path.
Yeah, it's not viable as a transportation option. It's a little private airport, there's no commercial traffic in and out of there. It's, you know, it's a fuel stop for private pilots going through, so.
As far as the PACC is concerned, I'm a member of that club. And it's a member-type club, so it's not really open to the public, but if the residents, you know, the potential, if they wanted to join, if they have Polish heritage, they certainly would be welcome. And if they're not of...there's got to be a connection to the Polish heritage in order to join even as an associate member. So not a very strong point as far as a path is concerned, other than it's probably a nice walk. That's about it.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any sites right on the water of Kendall Pond?
No, no. Not with this applicant, with this owner.
Would you do own some land on that lake?
No, I am involved in a professional capacity with a parcel on that lake that doesn't have anything to do with this project, but I don't want to not answer your question correctly.
Is the larger parcel out back, I think 11 acres?
Yes, it's 11 acres.
That backs up to the PACC that doesn't get to the water?
It does not. It does back the PACC substantially on one boundary, but it does not get to the water at all. Mr. Manka does still own parcels further down that access the road below, at the airport road, but we do not purchase those parcels from him. Do you have any other...oh, definitely.
Just, I...one thing he didn't address was yield and space, the common open space. Argue 20% on the site.
So as far as common open space, I will say just there are metrics on the front that only currently looking at, again, those parcels, only 22.9% is used, 77% remains open and vacant. The design, and this is Joanne Tavano who's the owner of the project, the design at the beginning included some open space in the nature of a patio and a basketball court and a fenced-in dog area for pet owners. And in the revised plan, are those still contemplated?
We were gonna push them up further, so they're not, you know, 1.6 inside.
Yeah, so back, they would be located back around this parcel, right here.
Would that inhibit future development?
I would push them up, except one of the people has a backyard and we put the 50-foot bumper around the whole project for the trees. We're gonna leave as many trees as we can, you know, just streets. But yeah, that 1.6 makes more sense. It'll be a common area for both neighborhoods.
And as long as the remaining development is compatible, we have another 11-acre parcel.
Yeah, it's a bigger parcel. Probably important, a small 11-acre and like a walking trail for the neighbors and bike cab for the kids. Then do a smaller dog area and have a basketball court and one further up. And have a calf too, so we just need private riding in the house.
The structures on the Gardner portion of this phase of the project are expected to be condominiums, so they're expected to be sold. And we did anticipate that would be a resource for older homeowners in Gardner who wanted to stay in Gardner but downsize and not have the maintenance, as well as single professionals or very, very young small families looking to, you know, start their first homeownership in Gardner. I note that there is very little condominium housing in Gardner, so that's not an option that is available for a lot of, again, people who might want to downsize but stay in their home neighborhood. One of the issues that came up when we were in front of the zoning board was whether or not a fire access road should be allowed for along the edge of the property. There is an old cart path within the 50-foot buffer on this side that can be, with a very little clearing because it's not very overgrown, there's some smaller trees and shrubs. The cart path can be made available for a fire path if that's something that the board would be interested in seeing on this plan.
I can comment on that real quick. I mean, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of the fire department, but I don't, I think that's overkill. If you have a subdivision or a cul-de-sac that's, you know, where the trucks can turn around adequately and it's within a 900-foot length of what's allowed for a cul-de-sac, it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
I mean, that's just my opinion. I don't think, you know, having a separate access road would be necessary, but I want the fire department to speak to that.
Yeah, they're the final word on that.
But I think that's overkill.
No, we're here for informal comments, so any kind of feedback, it's taken with a grain of salt. I will reiterate, sorry, it's NPR here. As I said, one of the other options was to seek a zoning change. And this again is not something I'm going to formally present tonight, but this is a few of the materials that were forwarded to Mr. Boergaard briefly. This is an outline of the C2 district in this area, the subject parcel being located at this end, and this is the river. When we did a zoning analysis of this C2 district, we found that there were 28 non-renewed parcels in this portion of the C2 district, and of them only seven were conforming. So there is a lot of non-conforming in this district's district. I think when this district was first implemented, the thought was that this is a state route, that we want to encourage commercial development along this route, and therefore we're gonna designate it C2. But in actuality, it seems that there's been residential development in this area. And my suggestion would be, and that's just a map, showing that again. So these are all the parcels, the 28 parcels, and anything that's darkened is non-conforming, non-conforming with one use or another. We believe that a change of this district to COM1 would allow all of these residential uses which are now non-conforming to become conforming. It would still allow commercial development along the corridor in the future if that came to be appropriate for the area. The industrial uses, because it is basically mostly residential, a few industrial uses closer to the river, the industrial uses would remain pre-existing non-conforming to the extent that they currently are. And for our project, what we would like to do is extend the COM1 district through our parcel here, here, and the 11 acres right there, which is now R2 with no frontage. With no frontage. So I am happy to answer any questions on that issue.
This isn't policy, this is just me speaking as an individual. I don't want to discourage you from pursuing this development under smart growth, but it seems that perhaps a more viable option, if you decide not to go that route, is to pursue a zoning change, petition the city council for a zoning change.
I appreciate...
Again, my personal opinion.
I appreciate the comments and your personal opinion. Thank you.
As I said in one of my emails to you, I think that's the route that your client wants to take that I think would be helpful to sit down and discuss. Because there is more than one option to pursue. It might be helpful just to sit down and talk about various options and what might be the best.
And certainly, I'm not gonna seek a change for all of this parcel because then it would be subject to a sponsor.
Sponsor.
I don't want to do that, so. And I do, looking at the district as a whole, I do think that, given that so many parcels are in use right now, bringing it back into conformity in the majority of the used parcels would be beneficial to the parcel owners as well, so.
Mr. Chairman, how long is the road that goes out to the cul-de-sac?
Let's see if the notation is on here.
It's 12...
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say it's approaching 700 feet.
What?
Almost 700 feet.
700 feet?
I was gonna say it's well below the 900, that is my maximum.
It would of course, on an extension to the future project, extend beyond that. And I would imagine we would exceed 900 at that point in time, but not through what is proposed. If there are no other comments? Thank you very much, board members, for your time and your feedback. We appreciate it.
You guys want these? I can send you a photo if you want the visual.
We didn't even see those.
Oh, that's a visual.
The exterior proposed is a one-car garage, two to three bedrooms, 1,400 square feet.
Almost 1,500.
1,500 square feet. And then there is an additional dedicated parking space in front of the garage in a driveway. Hopefully nice housing for people someday.
So of all the buildings gonna look like that?
All of them. So they're gonna be uniform?
Are you gonna consider doing like maybe some three-story townhouses and pads or...
Maybe in the second things. This here, we have, if we do a different style, it wouldn't be all the same kind of pack, so it looks uniform. I want it to be nice. I want it to be nice for Gardner and the residents, if we're able to do it.
One of the challenges of the smart growth provisions are that we are required to provide 20% affordable housing uses. This was contemplated to be a market rate project. That's a provision that I...my reading is it's not wavable by this board. But, and that will affect, of course, our ability to pursue the project. The cost factor on each individual unit on this project exceeds what we believe the affordable housing price level will be. So we would need to look for an additional funding source available from the state in order to support the project or, you know, manage the costs between units so that it was possible to do. But that is, of course, it's lovely to have affordable housing, but the constraint is of course very difficult to work with sometimes, especially when it's a new build as opposed to a renovation of an existing dwelling. The costs go up. In this case, the costs go up substantially because we have to bring the road, water, and sewer out, so.
The first phase of the, just the sewer engineering is a million dollars, just that first phase. The only good thing, it's sloped down, so it won't be any pumps. Sorry, it's telling a story, but I agree. This is a long-term thing for me too. I'm not leaving. It's gonna be my...I'm trying to leave corporate world. I've been in dentistry for 32 years. Now my son wants to do this, so I'm trying to muscle a relator and I want to, my second part of my life, my kid, my son. It's a long-term, it's a long-term, it's gonna be family, but I'm gonna try to leave a legacy, hopefully.
Yeah, she's looking to have a long-term investment in the city and have a long-term relationship with the city.
The first 16 we're selling so we can get a lot of funding. After that, we're gonna keep the rest as rentals.
Thank you, board members. Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming in. All right, next on our agenda, old business, 538 Clark Street, decommissioning bond. You have an update for us?
Mr. Chairman, I had to send back a new bond with revised revisions, all except for one, which I have to respond back to them. They left one out for some reason, I'm not sure why. So I have to get back to them in half a discussion with them before we take any action.
You don't need any action from me today.
Same discussion, but a different bond, so to speak.
Yes, well, I replied to them with some comments and recommendations and they actually complied with all but one. They left one clause out and I'm not sure why, so I need to get back to them. I can't have a discussion with them because I have no way of contacting them, but I'll have to send correspondence.
Might just be a clerical oversight?
Yeah, maybe.
Intentional.
All right, next article, the telegram and gazette.
That's why I didn't see it, I don't get the telegram.
Yeah, the same here.
Yeah, so basically they do a high, they highlight each community within Worcester County, housing trends and price points for each community, and this one just happened to be on Gardner, so I figured I'd provide it to everybody.
Some positive press, that's nice.
Unfortunately, the pictures they use are pictures of houses in Westminster.
Yeah, I just...
Which I don't get. I'm like, remember me? I'm looking at it like, why would they use houses in Westminster?
I just saw the captions and the photos.
Talking about calendars, but it is what it is.
All right, very good. Next meeting, Tuesday, May 10th at 7:00 AM.
I love the year.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a special permit public here and then there. So we should probably talk about an alternate date where everybody can make it. On month's block, we're gonna be back following Wednesday, Tuesday, I mean, sorry, it's the 17th.
We're gonna be in Florida, I don't know where... We're gonna be in Florida, I don't know what time she has us scheduled to come back.
Wrong time for you to go.
I know. But...
Or maybe the week before. Do you know when you're leaving?
The 10th.
Oh, you're leaving on the 10th?
Yeah.
So maybe we can do, oh, actually, the 3rd.
I might be back by the 17th, but I can't.
3rd won't work for me. I wanna be in North Carolina.
You don't know how long you're on for?
Seven days.
17th?
Well, he'll still be gone on the 17th, right? That's, that's seven days, so.
What about the week before?
17th.
I won't be here.
17th you are?
He's out of town that week. 17th, or the 3rd?
The 3rd.
Yeah, 3rd he's gone. 17th, you'll still, you'll probably still be gone, or you'll be traveling or whatever because it's, that's the 7th day, and then about the 24th?
What kind of time?
Yeah, I won't care with that.
So I'll check in. It's for marijuana cultivator in Southern Industrial Park, 236.
Oh, okay.
Existing building. We're having a development review committee meeting on Thursday morning for that project.
All right, that's a discussion, we should all be here, so push it out to the 24th.
I'll have a discussion with the applicant, too, just let them know, make sure it works for them, and I'm assuming it will.
Okey-dokey.
Sounds good.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion with adjourners, chairman.
Hey, that's my turn.
Sorry.
You were second.
You could be quicker, Bob.
I'm looking right at you, but goodness sakes, I thought he was still in Florida.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none by voice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.